Los Angeles County has the largest population of homeless veterans in the country. So, we must take the lead in providing new housing opportunities for veterans.
Studies show women in the military could be more impacted by post-traumatic stress disorder and divorce than their male counterparts. They're also the fastest-growing homeless population. Over 70% of homeless women veterans don't stay in overnight shelters.
These figures horrify me, and they should horrify you as well. These women who served our country return to the grim reality of sleeping under bridges, along the river, on a bench, or in the backseat of a car.
But not the Weavers and their new neighbors. 30% of their income goes toward renting these two-story townhomes built with the help of Home Depot stores and Habitat for Humanity volunteers. The nine-acre site formerly owned by the U.S. Navy has drought-tolerant gardens, also a playground with one of the coolest treehouses you'll ever see.
I feel so blessed. There you go. I feel incredibly blessed.
Part of Mayor Garcetti's push to end veteran homelessness in L.A. by the end of the year. In San Pedro, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The village also has mental health treatment, childcare, and job placement services on site. Now, wasted water may have been gushing down the hills, but residents and city leaders have stopped one example of massive water waste in its tracks. Anna Marcos has more on a new policy by the L.A. Department of Water and Power.
A time of drought is not a good time to be wasting water. Yet, that's exactly what the city of L.A. found out it was doing when Eagle Rock residents called to complain. They had watched the L.A. Department of Water and Power release 70,000 gallons of water and let it escape into storm drains and into the ocean as it worked on a corroded pipe. That's when Councilmember Jose Wezar went into action.
In response to this, my office got calls. We got tagged on social media. We immediately called DWP to see what can be done. The DWP responded, send out some trucks to capture some of that water. Before the drought, it was standard to empty out pipes when you need to do routine maintenance. That simply does not make sense anymore.
Wezar asked the DWP to find alternatives to letting water drain into the ocean when pipes and reservoirs are getting work done. As a result, the DWP's new policies include collecting the drained water and using it in local parks, or draining the water into sewers so it can be recycled for irrigation and industrial purposes. The department will also start using more remote-operated underwater equipment, so fewer pipes need to be drained.
What we do with that water is really up to us. And so, today, we're making a decision to do something different with the water than what we've done in the past, and that's to put it to the highest beneficial use we can. We believe that it'll save millions of gallons of water a year.
And so, thanks to the joint effort by residents, Councilmember Wezar, and the DWP, L.A. has become more water-smart than ever before, as it continues to weather this historic drought. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
According to an independent study, L.A. has very low levels of water waste compared to other cities. For example, its water-waste index is less than half of Santa Monica's. It's a new campaign to get Angelino employees more fit and healthy, even at their work desks. Anna Marcos takes a look at the local Get Fit, Don't Sit campaign, a joint effort by city leaders and the American Diabetes Association.
Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell gets in a little dance and fitness action on the City Hall lawn before heading up to work at council chambers.
I feel energized and wide awake.
Both O'Farrell and Councilmember Herb Wesson have teamed up with the American Diabetes Association to promote Get Fit, Don't Sit Day, a wake-up call for workers to get off their chairs and start exercising to avoid a host of health problems from diabetes to heart disease and weight gain.
The cost of this is extremely, extremely expensive. It affects the bottom line of companies. It affects the bottom line of paychecks that we take home every day.
Sitting is the new smoking because it has risks. When your body is at rest for long periods of time, unless you're actually sleeping, it can cause risks to your health in terms of circulation.
Even if you can't full-on boogie down at work, there are still plenty of exercises at your desk that you can do, whether sitting down or standing up, with or without weights. In this case, I'm using Coke bottles. You can use water bottles. The experts recommend you take a break every one and a half hours for a few minutes to do a few reps.
We asked some of our Channel 35 crew to get moving. Our editor, Andrew, thought he'd take it easy, doing the same exercise I did, sitting down.
There's no reason for you not to be active. You can move wherever you are, any time of the day.
Our traffic coordinator, Marlene, took a break with a little seated jogging action, while our traffic support guy, Joe, took a more active approach to his jogging routine. Tricep dips and lunges helped our social media guy, Jack, get his fitness groove on, and some found extra motivation touching their toes with a group involved. The message is, no matter who you are, whether you squat or not, desk exercise breaks can help keep you fit and healthy for years to come. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
Eighty-seven L.A. companies have now signed on to be part of the Get Fit, Don't Sit program. While small businesses and job creation are on the rise in Los Angeles, city attorney Mike Fuhrer taps into local neighborhoods with the help of a new social network app, and Councilmember Paul Krikorian wants the traffic app Waze to put the brakes on cut-through traffic. These stories in City Beat. Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti spoke at a small business reception at City Hall recently, saying the city is making great strides in job growth, adding 70,000 new jobs in nearly two years, and 50,000 businesses also incorporated within that same time period. And with his Back to Basics agenda, the mayor said he wants small businesses to know that City Hall is there to help.
We want to know what we can do better at City Hall. What you need from City Hall. Where aren't we lending a hand, and where are we getting still in the way of your progress? Because we're going to fix it. We're going to change it. We've already seen how much we can accomplish in 22 months. Imagine what we can do, hopefully, in eight years or more together.
A group of small business owners also took the opportunity to talk about their own experiences and give some advice to students from Dorsey High School. City Attorney Mike Fuhrer recently announced a new collaboration with a private social network site, Nextdoor.com. The site allows users to connect with other residents in their neighborhoods. Fuhrer said there are 22 neighborhood prosecutors now in place, up from eight, who will work and communicate even more effectively with L.A. residents to make neighborhoods stronger and safer. The neighborhood prosecutors will use Nextdoor to communicate with residents about various initiatives, and residents will be able to alert them about community issues. And from neighborhoods to neighborhood traffic, Councilmember Paul Krikorian wants to expand on another city partnership, which was recently announced by the mayor, this one with a smartphone traffic app called Waze. The app helps drivers get to where they need to go by rerouting motorists away from busy boulevards and avenues and onto side streets. But Krikorian wants Waze to take steps to reduce cut-through traffic in residential areas, saying that small neighborhood streets aren't designed to accommodate the volume, speed, and increased congestion of cut-through traffic. The L.A. Zoo finally has a name for its Western Grey baby kangaroo. This cute little kangaroo will now be known as Winnie the Rue, a name that was chosen from more than 500 entries submitted by the general public as part of the zoo's Name Our Rue contest. The zoo launched the social media campaign on Twitter, offering folks a rare opportunity to name the zoo animal. And after 5,082 votes and more than 12,000 visits to the L.A. Zoo's Name Our Rue Contest webpage, the zoo picked the winner. They tweeted an adorable clip of the cutie pie writing, "And the winning name of our baby kangaroo is Winnie the Rue." And it was certainly not an easy choice. The zoo tweeted the adorable names of the top five finalists, writing, "After over 5,000 votes, excited to announce the name of our Rue finalists: Ariel, Penelope, Winnie the Rue, Keanu, and Kip." The name of the winning entry was conceived by Patricia Beauchamp of Los Angeles. In addition to bragging rights, she'll also receive a GoPro Hero 4 camera and a family deluxe membership to the zoo. Two runners-up, Cody Grindal, who submitted Penelope, and Delia G., who proposed Keanu, will also receive family memberships. And that's our This Week in Tweets. A Spanish book fair returns, an archaeological dig, and a heated race to the finish line. All this in this week's Things to Do.
Angels do read, and when they read, their dreams come true.
After a one-year hiatus, Laia LA, the Spanish-language book fair, is back in Los Angeles. Come with your family to the convention center Friday, May 15 through Sunday, May 17, and enjoy a variety of fun and educational activities. The weekend will feature forums, book signings, cultural activities, children workshops, conferences, and plenty of books to read in Spanish. Admission is free. For more information, just visit laia-la.com. Your kids will dig this weekend's event over at the Skirball Center on Saturday, May 16 and Sunday, May 17. Children of all ages can get their hands dirty during Dig It, an archaeological dig at the Skirball Center. Kids will get a chance to slip on an archaeologist's vest, sift and sort through sand to find hidden ancient artifacts. The program is included with museum admission, and no reservation is required. Dig It takes place on Saturdays and Sundays, except May 24. The Skirball Cultural Center is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard in Los Angeles. For the special summer schedule, visit skirball.com/programs. And if you're looking for some fun and adventure, spend an unforgettable day on a uniquely awesome journey that will have you discovering new places, solving challenging clues, and meeting new people. Race L.A. will get your heart racing as teams of two make their way to locations around the L.A. area, some famous and some little-known, performing challenges and solving clues that lead to their next destinations, all while racing against other teams in a heated competition to reach the finish line first. Inspired by TV's The Amazing Race, Race L.A. takes you on around-the-world adventure right here in L.A. In each race, players make their way to many cultural, historical, natural, and entertainment-related attractions, from hidden Hollywood secrets, spectacular architectural treasures, tranquil parks, to gardens and urban shopping areas. The action begins on Saturday, May 16 at 8:00 a.m. in Pershing Square, located at 532 South Olive Street. Tickets are $115 per person or $230 per team. For more information, visit racel.com. And that's a look at some things to do.
And finally tonight, the LAPD fired up the grill and served some tasty hot dogs with all the fixins in an effort to engage the local community. An LAPD martial arts team shows off some impressive moves during a recent community cookout at the Toblerone Recreation Center in Los Angeles. The cookout was hosted by the LAPD's Rampart Division. The purpose? To enhance the relationship between police officers and the youth in the community, and show what programs are available for the kids to help them stay busy after school. One young man who's been training in martial arts for a year said the sport is good for kids.
It's important so kids could know how to defend themselves in case of emergency. Learn how to be disciplined, respectful to teachers, to their parents, to others.
The martial arts team went through a series of demonstrations showing their skills of strength and power. LAPD cadets were also on hand, passing out flyers and talking to kids about opportunities and other activities that they can participate in, especially during the summer months.
Rampart's a growing, you know, young community, and we just want to make sure everybody feels safe.
About 200 folks came out to enjoy the festivities and good food. The cookout is a new event started this year in conjunction with the city's Summer Nightlight Program. LAPD officials say they plan on holding another cookout sometime this summer. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Yana Kay. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and you can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Councilmembers, if you can...
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35.
Please ask council members Martinez, Parks, Price, and Weezar. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. I am Mitchell Englander. Today is Tuesday, May 12th. And Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bloomfield, Bonneville, Busciano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Corretz, Correia, LeBange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Ten members present in court, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. We are live on Channel 35, streaming as well on the Internet. Want to thank the members of the public for tuning in and showing up. First order of business, please.
Approval of minutes.
Okay, Councilmember Busciano moves, Fuentes seconds.
Next is communitar resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Corretz moves, Councilmember LeBange seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now be the time for the flag salute.
Oh, great, thank you very much. If we can ask Councilmember Joe Busciano, please lead us in the flag salute. Everybody, please rise. Hands over your heart, ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members, if I can call and direct your attention to the agenda, Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda if we could now.
Mr. President, before we begin, there's a request to continue Item 1G to June 12th.
Okay, that'll be the order without objection?
Item 12 to May 20th, and Item 17 to tomorrow, May 13th.
Okay, and I believe we are holding Item 15 for an amending motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
And I don't believe that's been circulated as of yet. We'll go ahead and hold that on the desk as well.
Okay, first item, Items 1 through 3 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Billups and Safe reports that Item 1A may be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid.
Okay, that'll be the order. Do we have cards on any of those items?
Yes, cards on all three items.
Of course. We'll go ahead and hold those for cards then. And if we can then just take, we'll go ahead and take Items 4 through 19.
Yes, Items 4 through 19 are items which public hearings have been held.
Members, any specials?
15, I have a question on.
15, we're holding for an amending motion, so we're holding that item on the desk for now anyway, Mr. LeBange. Any other specials members? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those remaining items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Great, thank you. Those items pass.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I just want to recognize, just reappointed Mr. and Ms. Esther Hatch here to the Harbor Area Planning Commission. Thank you, Esther, for your commitment to our city. We just love watching you. You've done so much for the Harbor City community, specifically as a mom, too. You're PTA at La Mina Magnet, and just really blessed to have you as your mom. And we want to thank you for your service to our city, and look forward to working with you on the Harbor Area Planning Commission. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And I'd also like to recognize Mr. Hartunian, who we just reaffirmed for commission appointment as well to the Planning Commission, and truly appreciate your dedication to the City of Los Angeles as well. Thank you very much. Three commissioners all reappointed, one new commissioner, and two other reappointments. Congratulations, and thank you to you all as well. Appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, just for the record, Items 7 and 8, the ordinances will be held over for one week for second reading unless reconsidered with 12 members. Items 20 through 27 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, those items are before us just for consideration, so if we can please open the roll on those for consideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Okay, and those items are now before us. Do we have cards on those items?
Yes, cards on Items 20, 25, 26, and 27.
Okay, we'll go ahead and then, members, and take Items 21, 22, 23, and 24. Any specials on those? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Mr. President, there's also cards on Items 21 and 23. So council is voting on Items 22 and 24.
All right, that'll be approved as amended. We'll go ahead and reopen the roll on those items then. We'll go ahead and open the roll on 22 and 24, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Great, thank you very much. Those items are approved. Next item, please.
On the supplemental agenda, Item 28 is an item which public hearing has been held.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on 28, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, and next item, please.
Item 29 is an item which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, that'll be for consideration, members. If we can please open the roll for consideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Love and ayes.
Okay, and that item now is before us?
There are cards on that item.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hold that item for cards. All right, I believe that takes us to presentations?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll go ahead, and we've got a special presentation from Councilmember Jose Weezer. Are you ready for yours? All right. Ready for the presentation? The floor is yours. Ready for the presentation?
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Thank you for being here. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and good morning to everyone. It is my pleasure this morning, and I have to say this, as a UCLA alum, to welcome USC to these fine chambers, and for good reason. How many USC alum here on the chambers? There's always been Mr. Parks, I think, our city clerk? Who was in the back? Correia's in the back.
And I'm an honorary, so, yes.
You're honorary, okay. And we're here to have some members of USC for good reason. One of the reasons USC is considered one of the premier colleges in the nation is its outstanding medical school program and tradition. The KEC School of Medicine of USC, located in my district in Bull Heights, is the oldest medical school in Southern California. It is dedicated to patient care, scientific discovery, medical and bio science education, and community service. This morning, we are here to bring awareness to a program, and quite honestly, a condition that few know much about. I'm talking about acoustic neuroma, which is a benign tumor that impacts the brain and inner ear. If not treated properly, a patient can suffer single-sided deafness, balance issues, facial paralysis, and even death. The USC Acoustic Neuroma Center is an outstanding department within the KEC School of Medicine. The center is committed to serving the needs of Los Angeles City and County patients with acoustic neuroma. The USC Acoustic Neuroma Center is a partner A&amp;A, the Acoustic Neuroma Association, a national nonprofit that hosts nationwide efforts to raise awareness of the disease. During this week, thousands of patients, caregivers, family members, and healthcare professionals will participate in the Third Annual National Awareness Campaign, and it's important that the City of Los Angeles support them in these efforts. We are proud to partner with the leaders who are focused on calling attention to this medical condition. At this time, I would like to welcome up to the microphone Chris Seiwick, who is the patient navigator for the program, as well as a former patient. Please welcome Mr. Seiwick.
It's me.
Miss?
It's okay. Thank you, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
On behalf of Dr. Rick A. Freeman, Director of the USC Acoustic Neuroma Center, our staff and patients, we want to express our sincere gratitude to Councilmember Jose Weezer and the City of Los Angeles for supporting thousands of patients who have been affected by acoustic neuroma. And we appreciate that you have joined USC and the Acoustic Neuroma Center and the Acoustic Neuroma Association in our national awareness endeavors by declaring A&amp;A Awareness Week in the City of Los Angeles from May 10th through May 16th. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Chris. My name is Kevin McCarthy, and I was diagnosed with an acoustic neuroma last year and had my surgery at USC KEC in November. So I'm about six months out of brain surgery and have had an amazing recovery from that, and wanted to thank the L.A. City Council. Would also like to thank Councilman Weezer for keep making awareness of acoustic neuroma and of the great things that we're doing at USC KEC. Thank you.
Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you. We are also joined today by Sunny Jones. She is the USC's Acoustic Neuroma Program Administrator. Welcome so much, and thank you for all the work you do. And in the City of Los Angeles, as we bring awareness to many issues that we would love our residents to be aware of, one of the things that we can do in our own council districts is to contact the center and get more information. And if any of my colleagues would like to spread the information, we have some information in my office as well. And now, it's my honor at this time to declare May 10th through the 16th proclaimed, and I have trouble pronouncing this, the ANA Awareness, or is it ANA Awareness Week?
ANA.
What is it?
A&amp;A.
A&amp;A, it's not even pronounced. It's the A&amp;A Awareness Week in the City of Los Angeles. Congratulations, and thank you for the work you do, and thank you for the people you are serving.
All right, we've got one speaker, Mr. Weezer, Councilmember LeBange.
Weezer, and members, look at Mr. Weezer has such an important role with the USC Medical Center. We want to congratulate the KEC School of Medicine. In the next years, you have to all stand up and fight for the Trojans, fight for the people, as the redevelopment of the Medical Center area continues to look to the vision. Mr. Weezer, I'm speaking for you, but your magical touch of trying to connect Cal State University of Los Angeles with the USC Medical Center with a biotech corridor, with replacing the county road department with medical facilities to help all residents of Southern California. And I also rise, because yesterday, my wife had a great visit to Norris, and it was her 10th anniversary of being cancer-free. USC, USC, my wife Bridget, USC is always there, and in the future, we want to be there for them as they transform this wonderful facility into a greater facility for all of Southern California, and especially our east side communities. Thank you so much. Go Trojans, thank you.
All right, fight on.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. LeBange, and well said. And last but not least, go Trojans. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you very, very much. That's special presentation. I did see a banner, though, but I didn't see it opened up, Mr. Weezer, so make sure that banner gets opened up for the photos. I want a picture of you holding that banner, so I can proudly display that. There we go. Can we get a picture of Mr. Weezer with that draped over his shoulder, maybe? All right, thank you very much. I'll send it over to UCLA after you get the photo taken. All right, we've got now a special presentation by two council members, Councilmember Fuentes and O'Farrell. Can I get the council members to the podium for a special presentation?
Good morning, colleagues. Come on up. Don't be shy, all of our CalFresh friends here. Colleagues, I'm here today to help kick off with our good colleague here, Mitchell O'Farrell, May as CalFresh Awareness Month. And many of you may already know, and I'm sure that you all know what CalFresh Awareness Month is all about, but it's important for us to underscore the importance of how it is that we can make Los Angeles more food secure. And it begins with making sure that if you're eligible for CalFresh to sign up. More than 50% of those Angelenos who receive CalFresh benefits in the city are children. And we all know how important it is, especially from zero to five, that we nourish and train our little brains and minds around nutrition, because it really sets the tempo for everything else that happens. But many more people could be participating in the program in Los Angeles, in the great city of Los Angeles alone. It's estimated that another 340,000 people could be eligible for CalFresh. And the reason it's important, colleagues, is twofold. One, to make sure that homes are more food secure, but secondly, this is all money that we send to the federal government irrespective of how much it is that we get back. So if we are sending money to Washington, D.C. in our taxes, we should at least get it back, because it's our money. And it's our money to make sure that Los Angeles is properly nourished, and to make sure that the future of Los Angeles, the youth are properly nourished and ready to go. So throughout the month of May, Los Angeles, along with the county, thank you, by the way, Department of Social Services and other community partners, will be holding CalFresh outreach events to make sure that we make Los Angeles more food secure and get a return on our dollar that we deserve since we're already paying for it. In my council district, for example, next week, we'll be helping with two outreach events. Tuesday, May 19th, at Superior Grocery Store in Pacoima, from 9:00 to 4:00, will be signing up people, as well as Wednesday, May 20th, at the Northeast San Fernando Valley Work Source Center, from 9:00 to 2:30 p.m. Colleagues, these events are very important. Please put them on your social media. Please spread the word. We want to make sure that Los Angeles is properly nourished. We want to make sure that everyone's fed, and so we also want to make sure that we're getting the best return on our tax dollar. With that, I'm joined by one of our colleagues who is helping advance the ball on making sure that we accomplish all of this, Mitch O'Farrell.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Fuentes. Good morning, colleagues and distinguished guests. First, I'd like to recognize Councilman Fuentes and all the work he's put into expanding CalFresh to local residents. Let's please give Felipe Fuentes a round of applause. He deserves it. And I couldn't agree more that even more people should be participating in CalFresh. It's astonishing to hear that so many individuals are eligible and yet aren't enrolled or participating in the program. And we have the tools to connect everyone, no matter who they are, where they're from, or whatever their income level is, to this wonderful benefit of fresh food, healthy food access, is something that is so important to all of us. And I know that in my district, we have seven farmers markets. I want more. And CalFresh is one tool that is offered in the farmers markets. As many of you know, I'm a firm supporter in improving the health, well-being, and financial well-being of families and individuals within the great city of Los Angeles. That is why I stand here today, to increase awareness for CalFresh. I strongly advocate for a program that seeks to provide fresh nutritious food to families and children in California. It's one of the highest priorities of the City of Los Angeles, to support local constituents, and CalFresh helps further that cause. So everyone who's listening to this, please tell a neighbor that this resource is available, and if they're not signed up, chances are, they qualify and can take advantage of this benefit. I am so excited to co-present today's resolution, and even more excited to see the positive impact that CalFresh will have as we increase this awareness throughout Los Angeles. Now, I will turn it over to Jose Perez from the Los Angeles County Department of Public Social Services now, to say a few words. Mr. Perez?
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers Fuentes and O'Farrell. Good morning, council. Today, we're here to really express our appreciation for your support of CalFresh Awareness Month in May. On behalf of the County of Los Angeles, its Department of Public Social Services, and the wonderful partners, just a fraction of who you see behind us right now, this strong coalition is helping to get the word out to combat food insecurity and ensure that resources are available for those who need them. Briefly, CalFresh is a nutrition program, a supplemental nutrition program, that provides additional support for families needing food. It's an income-tested program, and its focus is on not just feeding those that need the help, but also in increasing awareness about nutrition, making positive nutritional decisions as well. I'll share some numbers with you quickly. Over 1.1 million L.A. County residents receive CalFresh benefits. That's an impressive number, but that's only 2/3 of those that are potentially eligible. It's an increase from 40% participation rate in 2010. So we've made quite a bit of, quite a dent before, that buzzer scared me, quite a dent in our participation rate, but there's more to be done. Your support of campaigns like this help us incredibly. I'll share briefly a quick story in terms of just how awareness is important. This year, as part of our campaign, we've introduced a little Twitter campaign in which we're encouraging folk to use the hashtag #CalFreshGotFood. We're encouraging people to take a picture of a healthy plate and post it. Our tweet of the day yesterday was an interesting one. Someone tweeted out that they appreciate the information, they were able to share it with their Uber driver, and in turn also helped them apply for CalFresh. It's this kind of community involvement and participation that is really important for us to get the word out, to ensure that those that are hungry get the services they need and are able to go to bed without having to deal with that significant barrier. Again, thank you so much for all your support and help. Your leadership in this effort is extremely important to us, and we expect other cities to be joining you in these efforts. cities to be joining you in these efforts as well. Again, thank you very much.
Great, no, thank you very much, and we do have one member.
We've got one more speaker, Mr. President, if it's okay with you. Wilson Herrera from MEND.
Fantastic.
Good morning, and thank you for inviting us here. We're really happy to be part of this great campaign. And just to tell you how big CalFresh for us it is in the area where we, where we have our organization, MEND, is that, yes, I want to share it with you, a way that a family came to me one day and told me to express how happy they were. Says that there was a little boy asking the father one day, "How big was God?" And the father looking up at the sky, say, "Do you see the plane up there?" And says, "Yes." Then the father took their little boy to the airport, and showed him the same plane closer at the airport, and says, "Do you see now, how big is that plane now?" And says, "Yes." It's a big difference when it's far away, when you're close to it. So, he says, "That's how God is." So that's, that's what the family says is for them, CalFresh nowadays. He says, "The more information they get, the closer to resolve their needs." Nowadays, there is more advising, and more talking about this, and especially this month, that is the CalAwareness Month, Week, Month, sorry, families are really getting into find out more and more. Before, they were afraid to apply, they were afraid to find out more about the CalFresh offering, so, but now with everything we're offering, families are just there, finding out that there is light at the end of the tunnel for them, applying and getting services when they really, doors are closing down on them. So, I'm really happy to be part of this because of that. We're making the difference in those families in need up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and one more?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, before we go to other members, I'd like to call up and introduce the Thai Community Development Center, otherwise known as Thai CDC. This incredible organization has provided valuable resources to the community, and has helped to increase participation in CalFresh in the Hollywood area. The Thai CDC holds its farmers market every Thursday at Hollywood and Western at the metro station between 3:30 and 7:30 PM, serves 300 clients per market day, including 20 to 40 CalFresh recipients, and we want to increase that number. The farmers market helps fill the lack of knowledge in the area about the resources available, including supplemental nutrition assistance and social benefits programs. The Thai CDC was first established to address the health and human service needs of the Thai population, but today, they continue that mission, and it gives me great pleasure, they reach a larger population, it gives me great pleasure to have them here today. So I'd like to invite Chauncey Martorell, founder and executive director of Thai CDC, to say a few quick words.
Chauncey?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. I'd like to bring a part of my team who makes our farmers market possible, Billy Lay, our market manager, and Audrey Hollis, who's actually our Mayor Corvista volunteer in service to America that also runs our, our market. They've made it quite a successful market, and I want to thank Councilman Mitchell Farrell for recognizing us today in commemoration of CalFresh Awareness Month. I think that's great that we have such an awareness month, because it is so critical and vital to combat food insecurity. As, as Councilman O'Farrell said, our farmers market is operated daily, I mean weekly, every Thursday from 3:30 to 7:30. It is at the metro stop at Hollywood and Western, the Western Gateway to Thai Town, and it's also located in the promise zone. And we have half a dozen farmers selling at our market. We serve 15,000 consumers every year, 2,000 of whom are CalFresh recipients, and another over 1,500 per year are WIC and SSI recipients. And the best thing about this market, it is a creative food resource, because we also offer a Market Match Program. And through Hunger Action L.A., we've been offered, able to offer Market Match Programs to CalFresh participants and WIC and SSI, SSDI recipients, and provide an additional $5 to $10 to CalFresh and SSI recipients per market day. We have now distributed over $5,000 under this Market Match Program. So by, by doing that, we've essentially expanded the purchasing power of the area's low-income residents. So that's like free money being given out there at our market, so that we could double the purchasing power of the low-income residents in the area. And that is definitely a way to combat food insecurity in the area. We also establish nutrition education programs, we also link to area nonprofits, and link local agriculture and market customers, collaborate with area agencies to make that farmers market a one-stop solution for affordable produce, nutrition education, health awareness, as well as location for the neighborhood and government outreach. The DPS, Department of Public Social Services, actually comes every two months to enroll folks into the CalFresh program, including this month, they'll be there as well. So this is wonderful that we are able to make this CalFresh program a key and vital resource for, for all those who are low-income and in need of access to local produce that's affordable and fresh. Thank you.
So, real quick, I neglected to present the certificate. I would like to, Felipe and I would like to honor Thai CDC from the 13th District, as far as their advocacy for spreading the awareness of CalFresh and all the incredible services for fresh, healthy food access to those in need. So, thank you, Chauncey, and your colleagues and Thai CDC, congratulations.
You bet.
And thank you to MEND, too, we got a certificate for them.
And we also have Councilmember Tom Labange on the cue.
Everybody, look at this direction, look at Betsy, give Betsy a big hand, the great city photographer right there. And as you take your picture, I just wanted to rise to salute you. Food is what gives us life, water just gives us food, and it's so important as we all get together. When Chauncey talked about the Thai Farmers Market, what's so important, members, and I know not all are on that, but the MTA should have more aggressive ways to share their sights, whether it's at Santa Monica by City College, and put another market there. Put a market, food markets, especially in European cities, other cities, often are at the subway station, so that's very good. And lastly, I wanted to say, as we look forward to the future, let's look for an ordinance at Michael LaGranne, listen to this, Mike LaGranne, if you're upstairs, take one space of a mini mall, and exit out and give it to sell fresh produce, fresh produce. Many cities that I've been able to visit see, the produce is right out there, visible, so it entices you in such a way, be part of our life. So I'm also proud of the farmers market, I know with Mr. Garcetti, the Silver Lake Farmers Market years and years ago, and the Largemont Market, which made a six-day street, Mr. Buscagno, a seven-day street, because people love to walk and be about a market, there's something special about it. Congratulations, best to our cousins from the county of Los Angeles, thank you for all that you guys do. See you, thank you, bye-bye.
You, Councilmember O'Farrell, Jose Perez from the Los Angeles County Department of Public Social Services, California food policy advocates, of course, MEND and Thai Community Development Center, May, CalFresh Awareness Month, spread the word, colleagues, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Great, no, thank you very much for that very important presentation.
Okay, good, good.
All right, Madam Clerk, if we can go ahead, and I'm going to reconsider now items seven and eight, those are ordinances. So we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration on seven, eight. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Great, so those two, seven and eight are before us now, members, if we can please, Joe? If we can please open the roll on seven and eight, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Okay, Mr. Buscagno?
Thank you, on item 28, Mr. President, we need super fourth with, and get that to the mayor as soon as possible, thank you.
Okay, we'll have to create a new category for super fourth with, but we could have an urgent fourth with, so we'll go ahead and put that towards urgent fourth with.
Yes, thank you.
That I do have.
All right, members, Mr. Buscagno is asking an urgent fourth with, which requires a vote, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. All right, thank you, that is passed. All right, so let's go ahead and take the next two, items two and three, for cards, two and three for cards, Rodney Brown, on items two and three, cards on both.
Hello, City Council, thank you.
Morning.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to address City Council today in support of funding for multifamily housing in the city of Los Angeles. My company is RCI Partners, I'm here representing All Management Corporation, a $2 billion nonprofit, who stands ready to create housing for homeless veterans in the city of Los Angeles. We have gone through this long list of over 500 properties that are abandoned and abated in the city of Los Angeles, and we're ready to step out and break the chains on these abandoned and nuisance properties, and create housing for homeless families and homeless U.S. veterans. I am a U.S. Army veteran myself, and have experienced in the past homelessness myself, so I understand the plight and the need for homelessness, for homeless, for housing, and to support nonprofits here in the city of Los Angeles. So where there comes to any support for multifamily housing, I'm here in support. We have gone to each and every district in this city and mapped out every building, every property that's chained and abandoned, not generating any revenue, and keeping us from generating housing, much-needed affordable housing in this city. So I look forward to working with every city council member in the rehabilitation of all of these buildings that stands in the way of us creating much-needed housing. We have done our so-called beta test.
Mr. President, I'm not sure if he's talking about the business improvement districts in two and three?
Yes.
Okay, if you could keep it specific to the actual items on the agenda.
So basically...
Hold on a sec, hold his time. If we have outbursts, again, from anybody in the audience during somebody's speaking time, we'll ask you to leave chambers, you're disrupting the meeting, so, please, sir.
Well, as it pertains to that item, we are a nonprofit organization with $2 billion in assets, and we stand ready to assist, and asking for advice from the city on how we use, how we can use our own funding to assist in these efforts to create and strengthening the plight for multifamily housing in Los Angeles.
Great, okay, thank you very much. One final card on two and three, John Walsh on item two.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems, this is number two, this concerns protests to the modification of the Arts District property, this is a BID. Now, some BIDs are excellent. The one in Hollywood, a couple of years ago, the LAPD is getting paid off to allow this Yucca and Argyle apartment building to go crazy, drug dealers all over it, nobody, the LAPD seemed to speak English when I, when I called up. I went to the BID, the BID cops raided the place, and all of a sudden, the LAPD shows up. Let me tell you right now, in the corner, that's at the corner of Hollywood, at the corner of Yucca and Argyle, it's even worse now, that was a couple of years ago, but the BID has done a very good job sometimes. And you pay for it, even if you're a renter, they can add it to your rent, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, we're going to go ahead, colleagues, and open the roll on items two and three, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Yes? Yes, sir.
Mr. President, oh, sorry, I just wanted to wake some people up here. Respectfully request number two fourth with, please.
Okay, two fourth with, without objection, that'll be the order, okay, we're going to go ahead and take item one for cards. John Walsh, pass, Donna.
Again, it looks like you're not going to give people a break. You give a lot of breaks over to the film industry, but we got a lot of things over here. We have one, two, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, two, which been resolved. So we really have got to work out a thing, so that people don't only pay the amount that was originally put there, that there isn't any late fees, because generally, they're not going to pay at all as soon as you put late fees, so then it makes it harder, then they'll have to go back and have more late fees, then they'll delay it again, and more late fees, to eventually have to take the whole thing away. So I wish everybody would come here and dispute this thing, so they can get the amount only that they have to do. So, because, because basically, you don't care about these people, you don't care about the people in Los Angeles, and you don't care about the people in Van Nuys, and that's why we don't have video conferencing, thank you.
Having no other cards, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, item 20, John Walsh. And item 20, Antonia Ramirez.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, it's, it's good to be back, we got a lot of things to take care of. And again, for the rent escrow account programs, once we get these homes into escrow and out of escrow, can we now use them and house now the more than 60,000 homeless individuals? Let's now start making another form of housing for the homeless population, including our military veterans, city attorneys, so I would urge...
The President, she's not talking about the rape.
That's not on the item.
Well, again, with the rent escrow account programs that you have, and you've been having this for going on, what, five years? And this keeps appearing in the city council agendas for about, what, five years? What are we doing? How are we concluding these agenda items? What actual status is, where is this item, city attorney? Could you answer that? Why does it keep appearing every week, every time, three times a week, and nothing has been done, no conclusions, no public input? What is to be done with this agenda item? While we've got over 60,000 homeless people, what do we do? Is there an answer, city attorney? You get paid $300,000 a year, come on, man, give me a break, thank you.
Okay, not on the item, but thank you very much. Okay, having no other, no other cards, on item 20, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. That item passes, item 21, Eric? Eric Previn? No longer here, okay. Herman? Don't wish to speak? Okay. Next, we'll go ahead and open the roll then on items 21, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Okay, item 23, Eric Previn? File your card, John Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential. My website is blocked in this building by the City Council. Number 23, this is $77,697.75 to MAXIS Communication. It's a refund claim. Now, what is this all about? I could spend, we could spend that money on sidewalks. All right, so I look up, well, MAXIS, it's a global network of local media planning and buying agencies, and the only one of its kind born in the digital age. They're just going to throw $70,000 plus to MAXIS. There's not one damn person up here that has the slightest idea what this is all about, because the mayor wants MAXIS to get $70,000. Go outside, every one of you, and look at your sidewalk, and think of how much money that could have been spent there, rather than on MAXIS refund claim. Has anybody here HollywoodHighlands.org?
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on item 23. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item, please. 25, Donna. Donna, did you want to pass? Okay, we'll go ahead and pass. Go ahead and open the roll on 25. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. 26, Donna. Pass. John Walsh. Followed by Herman on 26.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential. I wanted to get up and speak on this, because I'm not a naysayer. When you get up here, I might praise you or I might damn you.
Please stay on the item.
What is involved here? And right here, I damn the chair, but not this item. This is a Royal Arts Collective that makes the art, it gives them a right of entry to use city-owned property on North Figueroa. This is an excellent idea. They needed this, and when you do the right thing, and when, and often you do do the right thing, but incidentally, you're not giving a Royal Arts Collective any money. You're giving them a right to enter and use city-owned property. That's a very good thing. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Herman? Wish to speak on this item?
Mr. Biggers, I'm going to use one minute on this topic.
Stay on the item.
... for the Royal Arts Collective, a right to enter to use city-owned property located at 5601 North Figueroa Street. I brought my bag of doodles so I can participate. This is regarding any other liability arising from the grant of this right of entry permit. You should stop doing this permit process, because you're violating the rights of many American disability acts of people. Hey, you, aren't you listening? Don't they ever listen? Oh, hell, I'll keep it to one minute then. So the City Attorney interrupts speakers in violation of the Brown Act, 54950 to 54963. You're contempt of this order here, Mr. City Attorney. Sit down while we speak. This is an item of very importance regarding the Arts Collective right-of-way entry. Okay, six, five, four. Hold my time, Mr. Biggers. Keep it, Englander.
All right, having no other cards on this item, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Item 27 is now before us, John Walsh. Followed by Herman, followed by Donna. If you can line up in that order, or whoever makes it to the podium first. Donna. Herman. John Walsh. If I don't see the other two standing, we'll just go ahead and file your cards if you didn't want to speak on this. Want to go ahead and line up?
Another phony reward. Now, this, uh, the city paid out, the United States paid out the reward for Osama bin Laden, but you haven't, you don't pay out your rewards, because snitches get stitches. This is $50,000. You're holding out false hope, the shooting death of Juan Flores. These are gang killings. If I knew who was responsible and told you who was responsible, I would be shot to death, or I'd be stabbed to death. These are phony rewards. You've given out one reward in the past 25 years. If not, come and give, give me a number and all the information on how much money you have paid out in the last 25 years, and I think it's zero on rewards.
Hello, my name is Donna. This shows that we are not safe out there, that people are getting shot, and that especially gang-related, and the police can't be there. So that's why people have to be able to arm themselves. People have to be able to be, get back, they be able, the ability to carry, because, so that we won't have to see our names on rewards, and which won't be done anyway, because nobody will come up and nobody will turn somebody in and then have themselves shot, and then have them set up after they gave in, and they're on the thing with the City Council, having their name read off for rewards. People need to be able to have their Second Amendment rights, and nobody has the right to take that away from us. Because we don't want, if they thought that everybody was armed, no, they would not go out and shoot people just so randomly like this. Anyway, I don't believe that this thing's going to work, because I don't believe anybody's going to come up, because they're going to be the next reward item after, after they gave in somebody else. Thank you. I believe in the Second Amendment rights.
Side sun, east side sun, regarding recent violence in Highland Park. What about the violence today regarding this motion to offer the reward for information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of persons responsible in a shooting? How many times have we heard it on the news? Over and over and over. While at the LAPD Commission meeting this morning, while I was speaking on behalf of public interest, I did recall saying that because of the problem of Mr. Englander on this motion, having conflict of interest sitting on a safety committee and representing-
You're not on the item.
I'm representing-
You're not on the item.
-the offer of rewards. You tell me you don't participate in rewards, sir?
You're not on the item. Stay on the item.
I'm talking about rewards. You don't participate in rewards? That's my point. You see? Englander don't care about life. He never did. That's why he's sitting on this horseshoe now as the little Nazi man there with the big ears.
He is not talking about this reward motion.
Okay, you're, you're, you're not on it.
$3,000 shooting. Read the paper, man. Hey, read the paper. It talks about incidents of shootings on a daily basis in Los Angeles. You are not safe from any enforcement of the law, because not only are officers shooting people, civilians, Mr. City Attorney, that we pay out millions in settlement like Miss-
That's not on the item, so that's your last, that's, you're done. You're done. Go ahead and sit down. Thank you. Bye-bye. Okay, so seeing no other speaker, now you're disrupting the meeting. I've asked you three times now. Okay, now we're going to ask you to leave chambers. Okay. Have a nice day. All right, so we'll go ahead and open. We're asking you, sir, you've already disrupted the meeting, it's been your fourth warning, you can leave chambers for the day. Thank you. Warned you four times in this meeting, that you were disrupting the meeting. Four times. Now you're disrupting the meeting again, as you're refusing to leave. So, officers, if you can please help him out. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on item 27. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right, thank you very much. 29 for cards. John. Followed by Antonia.
John Walsh-
Okay, please hold on, John, please, for holding your time. Herman is still disrupting the meeting as he's shouting, as he's leaving council chambers, so I'd like to note that as well.
Capital punishment. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh, blogging at J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is one, this is the city, this is hard to believe, there's a piece of Lincoln Boulevard and Cadillac Avenue, Route 1. It's costing the county a fortune to maintain. I mean, the travel on that area is terrible. I mean, so what, they made a deal, I don't have time to tell you the whole deal, but the city is going to become larger and the county is going to become smaller, because they're taking this pain in the ass, in the asphalt, away from, the county is handing it over to the city, so the city is now a few square feet bigger, and we're going to be spending a lot more money on road repair rather than sidewalk repair. HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the roll on that item, close the roll. Oh, do we have one, oh, I'm sorry, one more. Go ahead.
First of all, I would say no to this resolution designed by Bonin. Mr. Bonin has a reputation of not being thorough with the Department of Transportation. I would seriously consider anything that comes out of Mr. Bonin's office, and I would certainly may also state that Mark Ridley Thomas is also one who is fraudulent, who is deceptive, and very misleading. So both of these individuals are not only corrupted, but they are not thorough with their resolutions. This regarding AB 10, A-10, it says that they will be negotiating and one will absorb the costs over the city and the county. I would seriously caution you that, again, the Department of Transportation under the city and the Department of Transportation under the county are misleading, are fraudulent, and have left the passengers holding the bag. Again, both Bonin and Mark Ridley Thomas are unethical pussies. Be careful, do not trust them.
Okay, you're not on that item. And so, we'll go ahead and, let's take a vote on that item. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and take item 15, yes.
Just before Mr. Blumenfeld, that the First Amendment allows people to use words that don't necessarily hear at a public meeting. The First Amendment does that.
Excuse me, if you're going to, ma'am, if you're going to yell out from the audience, we'll be asked to leave as well. Do not disrupt this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Blumenfeld.
I wanted to ask me to ask if we can make that item urgent forthwith. He's not here, so on his behalf.
We'll go ahead and open the roll on that request to make that item urgent, urgent forthwith, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Great, thank you very much, okay. And let's go ahead and take item 15, called special by Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The folks from the Sepulveda Basin Wildlife Area Steering Committee brought this item to my attention. They take care of one of our few precious wilderness areas in the city. For those of you who haven't been there, it's, it's basically the San Fernando Valley as it was before the settlers came, with all kinds of varieties of waterfowl and foliage and animals. And the steering committee has been concerned about people taking eggs from birds' nests, removing plants and soil illegally, and hunting birds and animals. And the LAPD officer Evelyn Solano and her partners tried to take care of the area, and they met with my staff, the City Attorney in Aragon Park, to discuss municipal regulations and, and changes that could be made to allow full protection against these problems. I want to amend my motion slightly. As it reads, it is a citywide ordinance change, but the City Attorney is already prepared to make the specific changes to protect the Sepulveda Basin and not the rest of the city. So it will take longer to figure out and solve the problems in the city's other wilderness areas. So I want to move that we approve this as a pilot protection change for the Sepulveda Basin Wilderness Area, and then have the City Attorney report back in 90 days on the necessary changes to protect the city's other beautiful and essential wildlife areas. And I'd like to ask for an eye vote on that amended motion.
Is there a second?
All right, there's a second by Mr. Labonge. We'll go ahead and open the roll. Yes, Mr. Labonge.
Computer's not working. How do you get it to work there, Mr. City Attorney? Push the button? Button's not working.
Well, I recognize you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coretts, I recognize you. We have the great honor of having a large area of open space, as Mr. Fuentes does, to the northwest, northeast, north-central of the San Fernando Valley, all over the north, the Angeles, et cetera. I just think we have to, not only for the wildlife, but also for tulips too, and the vandalism that is taking place in some of our national parks, as well as our city parks, that makes it difficult for nature to survive. So this is a good first step, but we have to educate everybody. Coyotes are going as far south as Olympic Boulevard. I don't know if anybody's seen a coyote south of Olympic. South, you seen him south of Olympic? South of Washington Boulevard, so south, going south, so going to the 10th District. But we want to keep them all up in the 4th and the 5th, where they have a natural habitat. So with that being said, I support this, but I do want to say we have more work to do. I'm so saddened to hear that over a million trees have been lost in the Angeles National Forest. I'm saddened to hear in our own Griffith Park, over 1,000 trees have been lost, not just because of the drought, but because of a beetle insect that has harmed the very, very important wildlife. We must protect this, and as I get ready to depart on my way in a few weeks there, Mr. Coretts, I'm calling on you, but especially Mr. Fuentes, who's the tallest member here now at that date. Mr. Parks and I will both be gone. You will be responsible getting those trees squared away. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
And that's adopted as amended.
Point of information. Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Point of information. Who's the tallest here? Is it Mr. Price or is it Mr. Fuentes?
I will not even engage in that conversation. I will not engage in that conversation while, while Mr. Weston is in the room. All right, so with, where does that take us, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings counsel to general public comment.
All right, general public comment. Please go ahead and put a minute on the clock, and if we can call Mr. Thomas Shelton to the podium. Thomas Shelton. Is he here? Going once? Going twice? We'll go ahead and note your card. Maya Anderson.
Honorable members of the council, my name is Maya Anderson, and I'm the Tenant Services Coordinator at the Koreatown Immigrant Workers Alliance. I also lived in the Koreatown community for several years. Kiwa respectfully requests that you join the unanimous recommendation of the City Planning Commission and deny the project outlined under item 18.
I'm sorry, ma'am, this is general public comment, not for, not for items that are actually scheduled on the agenda.
Right, but you didn't allow for public comments.
Yeah, ma'am, the public, public comment was already satisfied in committee, so you can speak to any item that's not on the agenda.
I would like to submit a letter on behalf of Kiwa if I could.
Okay, the public comment period for that is already closed, but you can speak to any item that's under our purview, that's not under the, not on the agenda.
Oh, okay, well, I'll attempt to submit the letter.
If you'd like to submit the letter, if you want to give it to the Sergeant-at-Arms, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We'll go ahead and accept it. Okay, thank you very much. Daniel Jones?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Daniel Jones, and I'm extremely happy to be here today. I would like to say to Mr. Labonge and Mr. Parks, the outgoing council members, that if it wasn't- if it wasn't for the participation on my half and their half and all the city council members, my awareness of how I feel about this country, this state, this county, this city, was in direct response to these members here. I have great esteem for everybody here. I would have been remiss if I wouldn't come down here to say thank you very much, good luck in your future endeavors. There's more work to be done. I've seen a turn in the city's enthusiasm, momentum. There seems to be a positive direction, and thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rodney Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President and city council members. I just wanted to—to thank, in his absence, Councilman Sodio, that we have completed our first abated and abandoned property project at 810 Beacon Avenue. It was abated and abandoned for several years, and we have now rehabbed that property, and it's now holding at least forty previously homeless individuals and veterans, with the capacity of holding eighty total. And we look forward to working with every other city council member in their own district to break the chains of those abated and abandoned properties, and it's called Project New Life. So I look forward to coming back here time and time again, giving you good news, and thanking you for your assistance in creating much-needed housing. Thank you.
Great, no, thank you. Eric Previn? Gone for the day. Susan Roca? Susan?
Morning.
Good morning. Channel Four did a story on Friday night at six o'clock. It's at NBCLA.com. You click on Investigations, and you see my story where I'm asking for peace and quiet in my home, which I've always been at the mercy of this city council and others before it, to give me peace and quiet in my home. There's an exemption in law which allows noisy churches to be as loud as they want, whenever they want, whenever they feel like it, no permits required, no rules, no laws. I'm asking for that law to be changed. Reselling Municipal Code, Chapter 11, Article 5, Section 115.02b. Are they really exempt from the law? No, they're not. Does LAPD say they are? Yes, they do. And they admit that in the story. The noise enforcement team admitted in the story on air that they are in violation.
Thank you very much. Donna? Followed by John Walsh, followed by Antonia, followed by Brian Barajas.
Okay, I want to tell people about the gun buyback. Don't put them in the gun buyback. Either sell them to the gun stores or sell them to the police officers themselves. Anyway, I wanted to say that Norrie Martinez had a great meeting in Van Nuys, Van Nuys Community at City Hall with LAPD. A lot of people showed up. People in the valley need to speak, so let's get the county and the city together to bring back the video conferencing of the valley so we can speak, so we can really speak. And the Democrat Party, it says, "Not for the common people," and they're anti-Israel, and Obama's anti-Israel. Don't let—is—they won't let Israel have its—secure its nation. They want them to show where the nukes are to Iran. Obama is—he's anti-American. He took away his U.S. flag behind him. He is Muslim, and he and his Democrats are communists.
You can stick to items under the purview of this body, please.
Yeah, well, okay, then the city council doesn't care about us. How about that?
Great, thank you very much, perfect. All right, Karen? Oh, I'm sorry. Karen will be after John Walsh, followed by Grace Yu.
JohnWalsh@HollywoodHighlands.org. The lady who told you about NBC, she was talking about excessive bell ringing at a church. She didn't mention that. I am Chairman John Walsh of Ditch Mitch Englander. He's trying to leave the city council to be a supervisor, anybody but Englander. As far as the election Tuesday, next Tuesday is an election. Check it out, don't miss it. Vote for David Rue, R-Y-U, if you're in that council manic district. Also, a school board, vote for Bennett Kaiser if you are in that school board district. I just want you to know, people here—the cameras are controlled by the city council, but Herb Weston is here. He's afraid to get up in front of me. He is 100 percent. If you vote for his candidate against David Rue, you are giving Herb Weston another seat, and his candidate—I won't even mention the candidate's name. Vote for Rue and Kaiser on Tuesday.
Please, do not reelect Mitchell Englander, who has violated our First Amendment rights time and time again, especially me at committee meetings and also here. Please do not reelect Herb Weston. He is another racist. I have come to learn one thing, that black politicals are in fact racist. Mark Ridley Thomas, Herb Weston have continuously and systematically censored and thrown us out like dogs. Do not reelect Herb Weston. He will only help destroy America. Do not reelect Gilbert Sodio, Paul Krikorian, Felipe Fuentes, Curran D. Price, Mike Bonin, Mitchell Farrell, Jose Wizar, Joe Buscaino, Tom Labange, and again, Mitchell Englander. And because they have denied the right to freedom of speech, something that is so sacred, something that is so decent and so American, you have violated that. How dare you? May you learn what it is to be thrown out like a dog. Your son's been in jail, maybe that's why.
Karen? Is it Sorano?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. My name is Karen Sorano, and I am here as a representative for Carlos Television Network. We're a new local TV station that just opened up about seven months ago on First Street and Chicago, and we're very interested in working with you guys. I'd like to congratulate you guys, because I know it takes a lot to be listening to a lot of the insults and a lot of the things that happen, and you guys sit there very patiently, and I highly give you props for that. But once again, I just wanted to say that we're here, and we are very interested in working with the city in any way that we can to help you guys better the city in any way, in any form. We're working very closely with a lot of the organizations that have already been established to work with the homeless, and just in any way that we can help, we're here. And thank you so much, and God bless you guys.
Thank you very much. Morning.
Good morning, council members. Grace Yu here. For general comments, I'd like to point out to the fact that this body has been acting in a manner that is once again causing a lawsuit to be brought. Perhaps you are not aware of all the violations that took place with the Catalina Project, the number—agenda item eighteen today, which you chose to ignore when there were opposition, and there were five opposition cards, speaker cards.
Well, I'm going to ask you to please stay on topic and—
Oh, no, this is a general comment to this body, because you are asking for another Millennium Hollywood Powers Type A lawsuit, where the city is acting in a manner that is against the residents. Your actions today have been less than democratic. Too many of you were missing when votes were going up 12-0. You weren't in here. There were not 12 people in this room.
Great, thank you very much. Brian Barajas? Thank you, ma'am. Brian Barajas? Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Brian Barajas? Last call? And then the final speaker, Thomas Shelton.
All right, there's a recent report by Robert Ingram, and I think the citizens should read this report. It's called "Manhattan's Struggle for Human Freedom Against the Slay Power of Virginia." I think the intention of this article, it's to bring the Americans who are being literally murdered by their representation—or lack of representation of their government, or whatever you want to call it. So my—I should say that the only person who actually gave you a country—it was several people, but one of them was actually assassinated. His name was Alexander Hamilton.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the final speakers, and I called it many times, and you weren't in the room, so your card has already been filed. You weren't in the room. I called it many times on many different items, by the way, so thank you. Sir, now you're disrupting the meeting, so thank you very much. So with that, we'll go ahead and—that concludes general public comment. Excuse me, sir, you're disrupting the meeting now. So with—so you're disrupting the meeting. Okay. Sir? All right, Tommy will talk to you on the ropes. All right, with that, council members, I believe, Madam Clerk, does that conclude the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those items will be posted and referred?
That clears the desk.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any announcements, colleagues? Seeing no announcements? Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any adjourning motions? We do. Okay, if we can have everybody in council chambers, including our guests, please rise for adjourning motions. Everybody, if we can please rise for adjourning motions. I'd like to start off first on my right with Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, it's with great sadness that I rise today to adjourn in the memory of Ms. Barbara Summerfield. Some of you may recall that on March 16th, she was struck by a vehicle in the intersection of Adams and Figueroa. The driver did not stop, instead circling the area and then speeding away. Despite suffering two broken legs, cracked ribs, multiple pelvis fractures, and possible head injuries at the hand of a hit-and-run driver earlier this month, she fought to hold on. There is still an active reward motion for the person who is now responsible for the death of a beloved mother, grandmother, sister, and friend. As a community, we cannot let this person go unpunished for their heinous actions. The retired U.S. Customs Personnel Specialist never stopped giving back to her community. She volunteered at her church. She also volunteered for VITA, which resides tax assistance for low-income residents. She leaves behind three daughters, Sheila, Leila, Felicia, her son-in-law Raymond, a grandson, her sister, and a host of nieces and nephews. She will be missed by her friends and her family and the community that she unwaveringly served, spent her time to serve. I request, members, that we adjourn in the memory of Ms. Barbara Summerfield.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Thank you. I missed O'Farrell and probably together on Barbara Arnold. Ninety-seven years young, lived a full life, was a wonderful person, and she worked for our Department of Recreation and Parks for 42 years. She was at Las Palmas Senior Center, which was right off Franklin, Las Palmas, in her last assignment, and she got everybody dancing. Just 10 days ago, Mr. O'Farrell and I joined in a celebration by the seniors, and you know there's nothing like a senior center, if you want to feel good about people, because they love each other, and they all came to appreciate Barbara Arnold. She was much loved, and I wanted to say her family and friends, her sister Kathleen, her five children, the two grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, all loved the life of 97-years-young, now in heaven Barbara Arnold. And so I wanted to mention that, and also I wanted to mention Chris Burton. You may have saw the paper. He was—got beat by cancer. He grew up in—in—born in Boston, but grew up in France and Italy, and then he enrolled at Pomona College in the mid-'60s, and later graduated from UC Irvine, and he taught at UCLA, became a very talented professor in 1986. But as an artist, he was much loved. He was a little bit of a bohemian, and he passed away at 69 in his home in Topeka Canyon. But his greatest contribution to our city is Urban Lights. Urban Lights was Ogden. When you're saying you get criticism that we vacate streets, well, we vacated Ogden, Ogden Drive, right there at Wilshire Boulevard, and that gave Lakma the opportunity to create public space. And in that public space, I believe it's 220 streetlights, old historic streetlights, that he placed in such a fashion. Now it's a magnet for all, from all over the city, for all times, at day and night, that they come to see Chris Burton's work, Urban Lights. His thought was to put the Mile—Miracle Mile—put the Miracle back in the Miracle Mile, excuse me, Chris, and he did. It truly is a loss. The community, the art community is so saddened. We remember Chris Burton. And finally, today, I did want to mention the name of Lee Craig, who was the director of the operating room, is the chief doctor at Good Samaritan Hospital. Recently, she was struck in a cycling accident, as well as her husband, who survived it, up in the Atascadero area, Paso Robos area of Midstate. But this morning, at the blessing of the bicycles at Good Samaritan, where there are 100 riders there, we remembered her and the life that she lived, Lee Craig, and also we shouted out Alex Baum, who you all know as the bike quarter, because today was that special day. So, members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Lee Craig, Barbara Arnold, and Chris Burton. All had their impact on life in a strong way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Parks?
Thank you. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Ann Shaw, who passed away on May 5th, 2015, at the age of 93. Ann was born in Columbus, Ohio. She moved to Los Angeles, where she graduated from Jefferson High School. She attended the University of Redlands, where she received her bachelor's degree. She also received a master's degree from Ohio State University and a master's in social work at USC, and an honorary doctorate from the University of Redlands. She was known as a quiet pioneer for women and minorities. She achieved a number of civic milestones. Her accomplishments include the first woman appointed to the California Commission on Judicial Performance, the first African-American president of Los Angeles YWCA, the first female president of the Board of Founder Savings and Loan, just to name a few. Her deeds and success led to a number of awards and honors from organizations such as the United Way and the NAACP. She was named Woman of the Year by the Los Angeles Times, Los Angeles Sentinel, and the California State Legislature. A devoted Episcopalian, Ann was recognized by the African Methodist Episcopal Church with the Outstanding Civic Worker and Civilian Award. The San Fernando Valley Jewish Community Center planted trees in her honor in the John F. Kennedy Forest in Israel. Ann was the widow of the late Leslie Shaw, Sr., the first African-American postmaster in Los Angeles, and her son Leslie Jr. preceded her in death. Her services will be held Thursday, May 14th, at Holman Methodist, United Methodist Church at 3320 West Adams Boulevard. Ann Shaw is survived by her children, Dan, Rebecca, Valerie Shaw, one of our former—long-time former Public Works Commissioners and a host of family members. In lieu of flowers, the family requests donations to the Les Shaw Jr. Memorial Scholarship Fund of California Community Foundation, 221 South Figueroa, LA 90012.
And, Mr. Parks, if we could add all members to that as well. I know she was a true legend, and the Shaw family, all of our condolences go out to the entire family as well. Thank you. Yes, Mr. O'Farrell?
Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn council today in the memory of Natalie A. Rucker. Washington Rucker, husband and family members are joining us today. It is with great sadness that she has passed. Born in New York City and raised in eastern North Carolina, Natalie Rucker was a lifelong resident of Los Angeles. She moved to Los Angeles in 1968 to work in cancer research at Children's Hospital, Los Angeles, and Children's Center for Cancer and Blood Diseases. Natalie dedicated over 45 years of her career to cancer research, nanotechnology, and organic chemistry. She served as a mentor and a teacher to scores of oncology researchers, publishing important findings in the field and earning the respect of colleagues all over the world. Children's Hospital is currently in the progress of naming—process of naming their lecture hall later this year in her memory. hall later this year in her memory. In addition to her professional accomplishments, Natalie was active in her community and, in particular, in beautification efforts in her Silver Lake neighborhood. She served as president of the Los Feliz Homeowners Association for more than thirty years. She was an avid bird watcher and weekend horticulturist. Natalie's interest in new cultures led to her traveling all over the world. She was an unabashed progressive and gave generously of her time and energy, particularly for those less fortunate. She leaves a host of family, friends and colleagues to remember her with fond memories and good times. Her husband, Washington Rucker and family, as I noted, are here in honor of the memory and contributions of this deserving Angelina Natalie Rucker. Natalie has passed away on Sunday, April twenty-sixth, after a long battle with cancer. May she rest in peace and we thank her for her service.
Thank you. Any other members over here? Seeing no other adjourning motions, that concludes city council for the day. We are officially adjourned. Be safe, thank you.